Good afternoon, everybody. It is a little after five and I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is December 9th and we are calling a meeting to discuss and to meet with our Senator and our legislator. Right now, if I may ask our clerk to call or board member. Yes, the role, thank you. We're finding problems. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Moore Spurrier.
Present.
Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perier.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to allow Ms. McKeever to attend our meeting virtually due to a personal medical concern.
I move that. I move. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do now want to open it up for a motion for approval of our agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Perier and Mr. Bryant. Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to our items for discussion. And do we have Senator Deeds and Delegate Hudson have joined us? Hello. Hello to staff and all of you on the screen, you lovely faces. I want to welcome you all. Thank you for joining us. And I believe if it's okay, we are going to move right into Mr. Wick Knox providing just a little presentation from V M D O regarding our reconfiguration plan. So if you will, I believe he'll be sharing a screen. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. So briefly, before I get into this, just a quick update for the school board. We finished our most recent pricing set last Friday. That is in the hands of the cost estimators right now. We will get that price back next Thursday and we have a working group meeting that afternoon to give folks an update on where that stands. As you recall, this will be the third time we have priced the set and we will do it one more time before we bring it to Board and Council in March for approval to move forward with the project. Just because we want to make very sure that we understand what we're doing, what it's going to cost and that the public understands what we're doing as we develop it. So we are on pace there. I'm proud to report and hopefully I've got some good, more good news next week. We do have two projects that went out to bid, a high school project in Maryland and a middle school project in Lancaster County down on the Northern Neck whose prices just came in this week and both of them were on budget. So that's good news. Hopefully the construction market is stabilizing a little bit. So unless there's any questions from the board about either one of those topics, I will go right into the presentation. Let's see here.
Go for it, Wick. Thank you.
All right. Can y'all see that? Looks like it's on the screen there. Okay. So we had a discussion in the working group about the need to kind of assemble a brief, concise deck to kind of describe to someone who may be completely new to our situation, what we're trying to do and our revenue needs and why we think the special sales tax is a key component of that. So I'm going to assume I'm talking to an audience that knows nothing about the project, although I'm sure that both of you do, Delegate Hudson and Senator Deeds, and give you that quick pitch and see how, see what kind of reactions we get. So this is a project that the city of Charlottesville has been working on for two decades to try to reconfigure our school systems. In the, in the mid 60s, we opened up two junior high schools, basically a North Side and a South Side high school, which resulted in kind of a de facto segregated system between a more white and affluent North Side and a more black and less affluent South Side. In 1988, we changed that into our current system where we have a everyone leaves elementary at fourth grade, fifth and sixth are together in an upper elementary school, seven and eight are together in a middle school, and then everyone's together at C H S and the high school. This quickly showed some of its own problems with the transitions that occur, unnecessary transitions that occur in the middle school level that we have been really identified as far, as far back as almost right after it occurred and have been looking for ways to fix that. Right? So starting about 20 years ago, this conversation got serious and ever since then, we have been looking to reconfigure, as you see on the diagram on the left, to take the pre-K out of our elementary schools, go back to a consolidated citywide pre-K system. Then we can move the fifth grade to the neighborhood elementary schools and have a true traditional six, seven, eight middle school and then the high school. Of course, to do this, we have to build new facilities because our current campus, the middle school campus can't accommodate the sixth grade, nor can it accommodate the growth. In addition to that, our facilities are old and so the other goal here is to improve and renovate our facilities so we know we can have a better impact on educational outcomes. Sure, I can advance slides here. So our buildings, our buildings are old. This is a scaled timeline of the school system. Our earliest records go back to 1869 and you can see that our oldest school building is more than half of that, of that length. So the two schools in question here in this project are the Walker and the Beaufort ones, the ones that are in blue. They're 57 years old. They were opened right after massive resistance and right when we first desegregated the school system. So in addition, we haven't made a bigger investment in our schools in 48 years. The last one being 1974 when we built C H S. And then altogether, the average age of these, these schools is 66 years. So our school, our stock of buildings is much more outdated than a lot of the surrounding districts around us. So that means, of course, that our learning spaces are from 1966, right? This is a very typical classroom that you would see either at Walker Upper Elementary or at Beaufort. So we know this just isn't cutting it for what we need to do, right? If we can provide better spaces, we know we can enhance teaching and learning, that we can reduce our operating costs and utility costs. And, and really important today, we can attract and retain teachers. You can also see here some of the quotes from the current CCS students where they, they said, you know, it's just, it's just a miserable place to be. There's no sunlight. There's poor acoustics. There's a lot of issues that need to be fixed in addition to just changing grade levels and where, where students attend school. So the proposal that we've been talking about and studying seriously since, really seriously since 2006, is to make an intervention in the system where we transform those two sites by starting off of renovating and expanding the, the middle school site so we can move the sixth grade up. We would, in that process, we would double the capacity of that existing campus. So that's going to accommodate for the system growth we've seen and of course, update these spaces. Then we could come back with that upper elementary campus and rebuild it as a centralized pre-K facility, one that's built specifically for the needs of that age group. It would give us the space to expand that program as we continue to look at expansion of pre-K as a priority in the Commonwealth and in the country. And it would also give us some extra spaces for wraparound services. The, the other part of this plan is that by this intervention, we create capacity in the entire system, right? We free up some space for central admin to occupy the Walker site and that frees up space in the high school. And then by doing the swap between pre-K and fifth grade in the elementary schools, the pre-K student to teacher ratio was 14 to 1. A fifth grade teach student to teacher ratio is 24 to 1. So in all six of those elementary school sites, you create additional capacity. So it helps us all across the board just by investing in these two areas. Right? We also know that these are the ages where we can make a difference, right? The, the graph there in the top left shows brain development. And there's two basic times, the first couple of years of life and then adolescence, middle school, where the brain is the most active. And that's where you're kind of setting the foundations for lifelong learning. Those synapses are being formed in those areas. So this is the time that we can make a difference. We also know that this is where we can have the most impact in terms of people that need this type of help, right? Our pre-K has the highest amount of diversity. 84% students of color compared to 34% overall in the city. And then 66% economically disadvantaged. The middle school just slightly lower than that. So those numbers are higher, much higher than the city as a whole, but they're also much higher than even the Charlottesville City Schools population as a whole. So these are areas that are worthy of investment. We know also that these are some pretty lousy spaces for human beings to be in, right? By doing some investments, we can make the classroom significantly quieter. They currently have these motel style HVAC units. That's the picture you see in the bottom right that are loud. They are at full fan noise. They are 65 decibels. That is the sound of my voice right now. So imagine being in a room and teaching over me while I'm talking. The daylight is pretty bad. The picture in the top right shows the, a classroom at Beaufort that has the most natural light in it. And a lot of them have none at all. And we can also do a lot more to improve our air quality through a renovation, all of which make a big difference in the lives of, of human beings. So we've been at work at this all throughout this year. We started in April. And we have a specific plan in place that has a wide amount of approval from the city. We've had a public design process. We created a community design team that met starting in, in June. We've had six to seven meetings and then just two months ago, both the city council and the school board unanimously passed resolutions supporting this project. It's been broadly covered in the press and all the candidates that recently ran for all the offices also supported it. So we know that when we put something on the ballot, that it is shovel ready, right? When we have a specific plan and voters are going to know exactly what it is that we want to do with it. One of the reasons why the special sales tax, we think is so key is that we just, we can't keep up with, with the economy in terms of inflation. Construction costs keep going up and up. And that inflation is, is our biggest threat right now to be able to raise revenue to match it. Last year, we saw over a 13% increase in school construction cost in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Even at a, even at a normal rate of about 4% construction inflation, when you talk about a project this size, it increases costs by $3 million a year. So all of the delays that we've had have just really made this harder and harder, right? And we also know that, that doing nothing is also, has a price to it, right? Because of the deferred maintenance and age, the two school sites we've been talking about are projected to require $10 million in replacement and upgrade costs over the next 10 years just to keep them the way they are, just to keep them as those same 1966 spaces. So on the bottom right there, I highlighted some of our, our timeline. So in 2010, the school board passed a very specific reconfiguration plan after a two-year study only to face the great recession, right? So we had this big drop in revenue. Everything got put on hold. So we start to come back out of that. Now all of a sudden, we had a big spike in enrollment. So the school board did a new plan to deal with that and that led up to another vote in support of this. In 2019, the city allocated money to start the planning process that we're on right now. All of that was delayed a year because of the pandemic and now we're facing this type of inflation, right? So these are the type of stumbling blocks we, we've had and we really can't risk deferring this again if there's other sources of revenue that can help us do this important work. The sales tax increase is important, we think, because the real estate taxes alone just, just aren't going to cut it. Right? We've started off and we have made, the city's made some difficult choices to take a couple of big projects out of our C I P projects that had matching funding for them, like the West Main project. So we've made some big sacrifices to prioritize schools and housing, right? Even with those cuts, to do our C I P, we'd be looking at a, almost 11% increase in our real estate taxes. That's after a bunch of assessments that just went up with our property, with our increasing values. Over the past four years, average home sales have increased by $85,000 in the city or in, in the area. And those prices, price up, push up prices everywhere. So we know if we had the special sales tax, we could raise $12 million annually, maybe more is the prediction. And that then eliminates the need for schools to compete with these other critical C I P priorities, in particular affordable housing. And of course, the last thing we want to do is make our affordable housing problem worse by increasing the real estate taxes, which just pass that cost along. And then finally, you know, we just think this is a matter of fairness, right? Charlottesville should have the same opportunity to vote on this as others. This has been popular. It's been bipartisan. This map here on the right shows counties that voted for either Biden or Trump in the, in, in the election. And in most of these places, eight out of nine, it is passed. It barely lost in Pennsylvania County by 23 votes. And we just think that the sales tax follows kind of a lot of the philosophy that we're hearing these days about local control of the schools, local control over the funding and the fact that it can exempt medication and groceries and only be used for the school construction with a built-in expiration date makes it very attractive and should for, for anyone of any, any party. So we think that, that everyone in the state should have the ability to have this choice to put it on the ballot and let the voters say, should we raise real estate taxes or should we have a special sales tax? And that is our, our request and what we're hoping you guys can help us with in Richmond.
Thank you, Wick. Delegate Hudson, Senator Deeds, I don't know if you have any specific questions for?
I don't have any questions and there's, I don't think there's any question that will support. I, I, I'm sure confident will support your request. In the Senate, generally there are two groups of people that would, are going to be opposed to this. And they're, they're probably all going to be on the Republican side, both groups. One, led by people like Emmett Hanger who think that we shouldn't do, do this on a piecemeal basis. We ought to have a statewide source of funding for school construction. And, you know, when you're, when you're, for a lot of these localities that want to raise their sales tax, they don't have, they don't have the, the retail base that Charlottesville does and they don't really have the ability to raise much money. And, and so some people will look at this and say, this is, this is not an adequate way to to address the fundamental problem and that's that there are school construction needs all over the state of Virginia and we've got to tackle it from a statewide basis. In the, the other side, I guess, you're going to say, and the position I take is that while we can't wait for a statewide solution anymore, we, we, we've got to be able to address it where we can, when we can. And this would give the voters of Charlottesville the ability to say, we're, we're willing to support Charlottesville schools with an extra penny. So I'll support it. There, there are some that will, that are going to vote against any sort of tax increase because their philosophy of government basically is that no taxes. They, 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 they believe in a free lunch philosophy. You know, I don't think we do.
Sir, how would? Go ahead. Go ahead, Delegate Hudson, please. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I, I would just add that I think that what we're trying to do, I'm also very supportive of the project and of everything that we can do in Richmond to make sure you have the authority that you need to get this done. As a matter of legislative strategy, I think that for now, what we're trying to do is keep our options open. And so I have drafted two separate versions of this bill. One, which would grant all localities the authority to have these referenda like you've seen in the places that have already passed them. And then another more targeted approach, which would add Charlottesville to the list of authorized localities. And I think that our top priority should be getting the project done. And if we can solve the statewide problem at the same time, that's all to the good. And we are sort of keeping an open mind until some of the other pieces fall into place in Richmond with new leadership, especially in the House. And we don't know who committee chairs and all that are. So just know that we've got both of those irons in the fire and probably won't try to make choices about which one to really lean into until we have to. In the meantime, we do have one good piece of news, which was, as I'm sure you've already heard, I know we've talked a bit about it, that the, the Commission on School Reconstruction and Modernization met last week and and approved, there's a commission, their support for the statewide approach. So I think that that throws some good weight behind that and let's, and I believe that the, the vote was unanimous and bipartisan. So there definitely are, are votes in both chambers and in both parties for that approach. And we'll sort of wait and see for now about which one looks like more viable in each chamber.
Yes, as, I mean, as a matter of fact, I did attend that report by the commission and it was unanimous support for that. It was also unanimous by the commission as far as having a dedicated source of funding for school modernization and construction. So they are looking at maximizing funding strategies and not just limiting it to one with a lot of discussion around the literary fund and what they can do differently with that. So there was a lot of good talk and, you know, we are grateful that you're both supportive of that and, and look to do whatever we can to be supportive of any legislation that you all are putting out, you know, if you need us to show up or do anything, please let us know.
I would just advise that, you know, some of the people that have been, been the loudest voices in this area are also the first people that will stand against any sort of increase in fun taxes. Sometimes when you have to pay for things, you gotta, you gotta raise, you gotta raise the money. So it's important that words match actions here and, and we, we, it's, it's going to be a challenge. We've got sort of somewhat of a new environment in this coming session. We're going to have to kind of feel our way around and see what we do, you know, where we go. But, because ultimately we want to get something that when, if we can get it passed, we also get it signed by the governor. Or, or we can make sure that we can override any sort of veto. I, I don't, I've, I've spoken with the governor-elect a couple of times. I've not, not broached the subject at all and I don't know what, what his views are. I just want to lay that out as something we've got to think about.
And to your question about what you can do to help, and I know that I've conveyed this to some of you individually, but for the group, anything that you can do to help us build coalitions with your colleagues across the state, I think is all to the good. Because the more that this can be perceived as something that comes from a range of diverse communities and it's not just a, you know, a small urban area sort of thing. It's not, you know, it's not just Charlottesville and Arlington. It's a wide range of folks, which I think is accurate. Because I think that you've already done the work of rallying your legislative delegation to be on board. And so what, what, for our sake, I think the next most helpful thing is for us to be able to stand up and present the bill and say, this has the support of the following localities and for that group of communities to, to sound wide and deep and like it comes from all sorts of places around Virginia.
Hi, this is Sheri Kraft and appreciate, appreciate the, both of you for your support for what we're trying to do. I'm wondering, would it be at all feasible to invite some of the more skeptical legislators to do a tour of some of our aging school facilities so that they could see, you know, in concrete terms, what, why we need to do this? Is that an option?
I, I think it's unlikely, given the timeline that we have in the run-up to session. Just because they've all got lots of people that they have to meet with in their districts and time is short before we head into Richmond and especially with the holidays. The reality is they've also all got schools like this in their communities. And so if they haven't already seen it in their own backyard, it's because they don't want to know it's a problem. But I appreciate, I appreciate the proposal.
Do any of the other board members here, do you have questions, comments for either one? Well, we appreciate your support and, and this format feels a little different. I'm used to sitting around a table and, and being face to face and we appreciate you being able to join us, but we did send the rest of our legislative priorities to you all to look at. You know, some of those reflective of what the V S B A delegates kind of approved as far as legislative priorities going forward. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at any of those or if you have any questions for us.
You know, I just got your priorities this afternoon and honestly, I've not had a chance to look at them. I've, I've had a bunch, bunch of other stuff going on and I've got to go to Richmond tonight and chair a meeting tomorrow where we're interviewing incumbent judges that are up for reelection. So between that and being in court this morning, I've had my hands full today. But in general, I would, I, I, I want to say that I think Governor Northam has done a, a, a pretty good job of juxtaposing the needs of Virginia and the new budget against some of the proposals that, that we can expect from the new administration. And it's going to be very interesting. I think the next session is going to be very interesting for us.
Thank you, sir. And I understand you're both extremely, extremely busy and we appreciate all the work you're doing. I want to apologize firsthand. I don't know if you've both met or been formally introduced to our new superintendent. So I apologize, but we have Dr. Gurley here and I know that at some point you guys will, will probably have a face-to-face meeting.
You know, I've, I've read about Dr. Gurley and I'm glad you are in Charlottesville and I know that things are going to be splendid under your leadership. You know, Charlottesville and Albemarle, you, you have a history of having two, a, a track record of two of the best superintendents in the state. And I would expect that to continue under Dr. Gurley's leadership.
Thank you so much. I appreciate those words. One of the things that we do would like your legislative support with is, you know, with the, with finding qualified teachers. And I think we are doing a very good job of recruiting teachers and we're hitting the pavements hard. But one of the things you'll see on our priorities, we are having some difficulties with getting the Child Protective Services background check back in a timely manner. We are losing teachers and it's because there is a significant delay in that area. And so if that's one of the things that you could just put on your radar and help us with, because we do need that back in a more timely manner so that we can get our, the most qualified teachers in front of our kiddos.
Sorry, I appreciate you flagging that. And I know that the CCS staff have been in touch with mine and we're trying to communicate better about processing those through the state. I know that there's been hangups where there's been bus drivers or, you know, certification at, at lots of different spots. I think that CPS is in some ways like a lot of state agencies right now that has experienced a lot of turnover and is backlogged. And I think that that's another opportunity for us to emphasize with the incoming administration that it should color how we talk about a surplus. Because I don't think that we can really talk about having extra money until we have the, the basic pipes flowing on some of those important paperwork kind of services that help everybody else do their job in a timely manner.
Anything else that anybody has questions or concerns about? Yeah, related to our legislative priorities. And again, Senator Deeds, if you need to go or if you have questions after you look at these items, if you, you know, we're happy to communicate or send emails to you.
I appreciate that and I've budgeted time for this before, before I'm on the road. So don't worry. I appreciate the opportunity to, to interact with you very much. I'm sorry we can't do it in person.
Yeah, thank you. We look forward to sitting at a table again with everybody. And before I forget or before we move on, Wick, I don't know if, if anybody has any questions for him and you're more than welcome to hang in here with us, but if you have other things to do, I know you've been working long and hard on this. Feel free to. But if you have other things to do, I know you've been working long and hard on this, feel free to.
Thanks, I'll hang out a little bit and see, see if the conversation comes back to this at all.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, concerns, board members? Go ahead, Dr. Kraft.
I wanted, I wanted to just raise something that I've been really interested in promoting. It isn't, it isn't on our list, but it has to do with our preschool, our pre K programs and the possibility of offering after school care for the children who are in our programs. And I'm wondering if you have any sense, if there are any initiatives out there on the state level or any funding prospects that could help us at least begin to maybe offer a pilot project, you know, to to try it out and, you know, give us some time to work on on other funding options. But it's something we've been struggling with for a while and would love some help with. So we have a lot of families who can't utilize our program because the parents work.
I, I, I don't know of anything that's going on right now. But Leah, you per year, you remember, wasn't this an issue we addressed four or five years ago with the school board? Didn't, didn't something similar come up then? And wasn't Charlottesville at that time doing a program that was somewhat? You, you were getting some grief from some of the state agencies.
Cree, we had done a partnership with the preschool at the Y in order to work with our children in the afternoon utilizing some of their staff members. But because their program has grown and utilization of what they need, we, it, it's not as strong as it was at one time. And yes, you are correct.
It's, it's an ongoing issue, and I realize the needs there. I'll keep it in mind in case some discussion comes up.
So Senator Deeds, that was with respect to the K five D S S regulations. They were using preschool regulations and for our after school program. So that was a distinction that D S S was making or V D S S. And so I think with preschool, after school, like you definitely have the after school regulations, but then you have the preschool after, you know, regulations as well. So that would be tricky. But yeah, so if you have anything, first of all, expanding the three year old preschool program, I think would be very helpful. But then also after care, to the extent that's, you know, possible.
You know, I think something that would be very helpful, and I don't know if if you're in a position to help us do this or if it's something where we could pull together some more districts. But I don't feel like the legislature has been given a clear charge about how much more funding would be needed to really make preschool a reality for the remaining kids who are uncovered. We, we keep hearing every few months about tremendous progress, and the Northam administration really has prioritized it largely led by the First Lady. But I don't think we have a good sense of how far we have to go in the same way that there's been very clear benchmarks set for how far we were relative to pre recession funding, for example. And I think in particular, to the extent that after care is a barrier for making preschool a reality for some families, that until you have both, you don't have either. I think that that's the kind of thing, if you, if you are at, you know, meetings with other school boards or with advocacy orgs, and you see opportunities to kind of document the scope of the problem, I think that that would be helpful. Because I, I think those, those big numbers about how far we have to go on important problems are always valuable to hold up next to the big numbers that people talk about when we hear about taxes that we could cut or revenue we could spend on something else. Because it lets us say, we could do that, but we'd be taking a pass on the preschool problem instead. And so I think anything you can do to help us quantify the opportunity cost, so to speak, of money that might be going out the door in the next administration so that we can help elevate that problem to its rightful place, I think would be very helpful.
That's great feedback, so thank you for that. Anybody else? Dr. Gurley, anything else on your radar? Mr. Wade joined us. Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions from either of you to us? And you're welcome to come join and take tours of our buildings anytime you'd like.
Just to thank you, especially for our retiring veterans who've been putting in so much work over the years, and some of whom will be switching posts, we'll be seeing them on another Zoom in another room soon and looking forward to all of it.
Yeah. Thank you for your service to those who aren't going to be serving anymore. Juan, can't wait to your own city council. We had, we had a meeting with the city council last week, and it was refreshing to, to be able to talk about issues in that format. Something we haven't done in a while.
Well, thank you both again for all of your work, and we look forward to speaking with you soon. And please let us know if there's anything, you know, you need from us. And we will definitely catch up and maybe see you in January.
Okay.
At our Capitol Conference. All right, thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Wick, thank you again. For your time, for that presentation. If, you know, just for reference, you know, for those of you who have followed along throughout the last year and the work that the M D O has done on reconfiguration and the different community meetings and how that presentation has gotten to the point where it is now and gotten us to where we are. You see a lot of, a lot of the work and a lot of hours condensed into those 10 slides. And and it took a lot of work by Wick and his team, and then some great input from other people to kind of condense it. So grateful for that. But it's, it's a nice condensed presentation of where we are at and where we hope to go. So really appreciative of that time. So that was kind of it, I guess. And if anybody has any questions, I mean, we can use a few minutes if you'd like to to just discuss some of this legislative priorities, those that went forward through V S B A. And then also, as I stated before, I mean, I did attend with Ms. Dooley Richmond last week and was able to hear the report from Senator McClellan and her commission regarding school construction and modernization. And it was very positive. There was bipartisan support and definitely unanimous right out of the gate as far as them all feeling like we need a dedicated source of funding for school construction. So they're looking at all options as far as how to do that and to provide as many options to schools and communities and what that might look like. And then they're supposed to come back, I guess, by, I need to watch for that, but by January 15th, I guess, with their different legislative bills that they're going to present. And so it'll be interesting to see what that looks like. And again, a lot of discussion around the literary fund and to revise that. And just for, for folks who, and I didn't know a whole lot about it, but that fund was originally a dedicated source that was used and was, was to be used for school construction. And then it's kind of switched over the years. And I think it was used less for that and more for teacher retirement. So there was a lot of looking at that. And I plan to kind of follow up with Senator McClellan and some of the other members of that committee and just realize from, from Ms. Powell and her experience and, and different construction projects that were put forth through the years. Basically, there just wasn't enough money in that fund. And and approval to, you know, from schools to use that or get loans for that fund just didn't happen quick enough. So I think there was just a decline in, in use of that. So anyway, I, I have some other information. I did share that out, I believe, or I had Leslie share all of those, the notes and the, the reports to board members. So anyway, I don't know if we want to talk about anything else or if anybody has any questions.
I'm wondering, you know, how we might be able to begin to work on what Delegate Hudson is asking for? You know, how could we begin to put together some information? And I guess it would be for, for our division. I, I wasn't sure if she was asking for, you know, for the costs statewide of funding, you know, fully funding preschool? Or if she was, you know, asking us to provide information on what it would require for us? So but somehow, it would be helpful if we could follow up and get her some information. And I would be glad to work on it with people who know a little more than I do.
So, so Dr. Kraft, I think what she's asking is to develop a benchmark of what preschool costs are now and how we see that moving forward. If you're asking the legislators to put money aside, are you asking for $20 million over a period of time? What, you know, where are we now? And what would it take for them to ultimately begin to sustain something such as this? And understanding that some of it would be localities and some of it would be state money. But if you don't, if you're asking for something which makes perfect sense, but you don't know how much it's going to cost and what you really need, they have to see, I don't know what the word is, I guess they have it. Over and above a cost analysis, a cost benefit, they've got to see what these dollars are going through. You know, what, what, what are they getting? You know, what's the bang for the buck, so to speak? And if you are looking at doing your winter regional meeting, you might want to look at some of the other municipalities that are in the central Virginia region to see where they are with that. And then look at some of your neighboring localities. What's happening in the Richmond area? What's happening in the Tidewater area? What's happening in the Northern Virginia area? Places where, and I'm not saying that preschool is not important. That is not what I'm saying. But when you're looking at after care, when you're in areas where a large percentage of your workforce are employed, after care is very important. And so if you're looking, if you look in those directions, I think that may give you some indices as to how to proceed.
I guess we, we still have access to Jenna Conway at the state level who has been in charge of, I guess, the B P I program across the state. And so she might also be a great source. I don't know if she will continue on in the new administration in that post or not, but she's been very responsive before. So I would be glad to reach out to her.
I'm happy to delegate that. Yeah, and I'm curious. I mean, was your sense that Delegate Hudson also was? So if we say we want to do more for our preschool program here locally, was she, I mean, my sense was she was asking for what is, so what funding will it take to make that happen? Right? And so.
Yeah, like what are, what are we actually talking about in terms of?
Right.
Real dollars? Yeah, I, I think so.
You know, so I mean, we do have some. I mean, even just when you're looking at the cost estimates that V M D O brought forward, you know, for the preschool center, you know, currently for X amount of classrooms, but our goal is in the future to expand it, you know. So looking at that.
Yeah.
You know, and because when we get the funding to move forward on that, you know, we want to be able to, to do more and add those extra classrooms so that there's that piece of it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I also got the sense that she was asking for us to paint a picture of the challenges that exist right now for preschool programs in general, not just to expand it, but the cost and what's available to parents and if it's affordable or not, to just kind of paint that for the whole state, that it's a challenge that's out there that isn't really at the forefront of discussions right now.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think you're absolutely right there. And I think all of that, you know, and then I think when you can put dollars next to those things, you know, it, it makes a difference. And that's where she or they have the, you know, the power to make their points at the state, you know, at the state level. Ms. McKeever, are you still with us? Maybe not. I think, I think there's a lot of, a lot of good work. I think to the extent that we are a lot of potential and possibility as far as funding opportunities. And I think like both the Senator and Delegate Hudson said, it's going to depend. I know that, you know, there was a lot of emphasis at the commission that, you know, basically to do the, the sales tax increase. Again, it's ultimately if they can do that so that individual localities don't have to continue to come and ask for that each year, you know, then it is ultimately up to the locality to make that decision because it would be a referendum and up to the citizens. You know, and that's where our work with city councilors and, and the school board, you know, will go out and other people who might be working and advocates for reconfiguration or other C I P projects that we need to do what we said we are committed to doing and educating and sitting down with the public and helping them understand what that looks like and what impacts that may or may not have. And that's kind of the work that we have going forward around this. Anything else, sir, that you have, that you wanted to?
We did have an opportunity on yesterday to visit a preschool center in Harrisonburg. And so I will tell you that we, we are meeting, Dr. Odie and I are meeting with Sheila Sparks on tomorrow. And so we, we're going to have some follow up conversations with regards to some of the things we saw yesterday. But ultimately, it is my goal, that it's our vision as a school division to just make sure that we're having an inclusive preschool program. So those who want preschool can have access to it. And but we still want to ensure that we are giving parents options. And so if private preschool is what parents choose, then they have that option. But we will ultimately, we want to be able to be a choice for all. And, and so I know the, I think there used to be a preschool steering committee or advisory committee, and that'll be a part of our conversation on tomorrow. And we had, well, Wick wasn't with us yesterday. We heard he had a little injury. But his team was with us yesterday from V M D O when we went to Elon Road in Harrisonburg. And so our conversations were robust, and we're going to continue that, that we're going to continue that work on. And we should be bringing more information, keeping more information in front of you. But I think we all have the same goals. And I think Ms. Morrisburger, Ms. Bryson Morrisburger mentioned capturing what are our challenges within our community? What do our families have access to? And we'll use those data points to just drive how we move forward. And it just, it's just going to be a really good win for us, especially once we get that preschool center. That's, I told them yesterday, that will become our brand.
Yeah.
Because that will be how the educational experience starts here in C C S. So, yeah.
Have, have you, Dr. Gurley, had a chance to meet with the United Way Vision Keepers Task Force or any people from that who have been working on just preschool throughout the community?
I have not had an opportunity to meet here. But in my former school division, I did work direct. did work directly with United Way, because they were our preschool partners for our preschool readiness camp in the summer. So all of those experiences are things that, you know, we're gonna continue to do for our children here, and so no, that's on my list for tomorrow too, because I know we do have that partnership here at CCS, so those are some of the things I want to make sure that we continue to make sure our families have access to.
Any other questions, comments, board members? Okay. I would like to open it up to comments from members of the community, if there's anybody who would like to come up. You're welcome to do so. I'm not sure if we have anybody logged in via Zoom or in the chat rooms at all. Looks like we do have a couple of attendees, so if anybody would like to make public comment, you can raise your hand in the chat room and/or come up in the media center here, again, just stating your name and your address, and you have three minutes for public comment. All right, and if not, I want to thank you all for your attendance, and we will adjourn the meeting. We do have a meeting next Wednesday, the 15th, here at the Media Center, 5 o'clock. Thank you.